A little bit, especially since Jim's not coming. Unless I'm then not in front of my name tag.
Um, to the cloud.
Recording in progress.
We have about 20 seconds left. All right, Mr. Chair, we are recording and it's seven o'clock.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'll take roll call. Lanterman here. Brummond.
Here.
Van den Eyde.
Here.
And I understand that Commissioners Shulock and Horn are unavailable, but I will note that we have a quorum for tonight's meeting. I'd like to encourage those of you who can participate to please join the commission and staff in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask my colleagues if you have any amendments to tonight's agenda? No? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So moved. I'm going to open up the floor now for...
Chair, I apologize. You have to do official vote.
Oh, an official vote?
Yes. So say all aye.
This is my first meeting now as chair, so please forgive me if I am not well-versed in that aspect. Can I get a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Perfect, thank you.
Certainly, thank you. Open forum. So we're going to open up the floor to the public to participate in the open forum. Now, these are... This would be the public's, your opportunity to address things with this commission, but these are items that are not... Only for items not already on tonight's agenda, okay? So is there anyone that would like to comment about something not on tonight's agenda?
And those of you joining us online, if you'd like to participate in the public... I'm sorry, in the open forum, please raise your hand either by pressing star nine if you're on the phone or utilizing the raise your hand function on your reactions menu for your tablet or computer. Thank you. Mr. Chair, no one's raising their hand online at this time.
Okay, thank you. And...
Oh, I apologize. We do have someone raising their hand now. One second. Sherry, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and address the commission. Please provide your name and address.
Hi, Sherry Burgs, 9530 Daphne Drives Rogers, 55374.
Perfect. And are you speaking on an item on the agenda or you have additional comments for the commission?
Item on the agenda.
Okay. So if you are speaking on item on the agenda, though, we will walk you through a public hearing or a public comment opportunity later. So this is for items that are specifically not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, no one else is raising their hand.
Okay. I don't need to take a vote to close the public meeting, right? Okay, so we'll just move on. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve both the June 2nd, 2022, as well as the September 1st Planning Commission meeting notes.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All set? You see? You see? We're doing okay. We'll get you out of here before 1:00, I hope. Okay, very good. Thank you. So, new business. I will open up the floor again to the public, to you, to speak about...
So in this case, Mr. Chair, it's specifically on the SLABO variance, which is not a public hearing, so informal comments could be taken at this time.
Okay. But that's still a public commentary opportunity, right?
Yep, yes. Specifically for SLABO variance, we will open up each individual public hearing for the rest of the items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to make comments to us about that application?
This is item 6B on the agenda, SLABO variance.
6B?
This is my first time coming. Hi, I'm...
Sure.
Oh, you're the applicant? Okay.
Yeah, I'm the applicant.
Hi, Gideon, nice to meet you.
I'm not quite sure...
Yeah. That's great to know that that's you. So when we get to that item after Corcoran Farms, we'll ask you if there's any questions if you don't have any other comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone online?
Yeah, anyone online that'd like to make comments on specifically item 6B, SLABO variance at 9925 Ebert Road? Now would be your time to make a comment. Raise your hand either by star nine for your phone or the raise your hand function on the reactions menu on your computer or mobile device. No one is raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. Can we start the public hearing then?
Yep. We can go on to the next...
Staff report?
All right. So Kendra will start with the staff report for 6A.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is a request for rezoning PUD and preliminary plat for Corcoran Farms Business Park.
Sorry.
I can't...
Yeah.
I forgot. Why is it... So this is the site north of Larkin Road, south of County Road 50, behind the existing Corcoran Business area. Next slide. I am going to go through the high-level items. This is a big staff report. There's a lot of detail. Happy to answer more, but for the public, I want to go through a little bit of detail. The applicant has submitted this request to develop a five-lot industrial park on this 70-acre property. The property is zoned light industrial. It's in the Shoreland Overlay District. There's a creek that separates this property from the existing industrial park. And in the Shoreland Overlay District, there are state requirements related to what can happen in that overlay district, and the city has adopted additional... Adopted those by ordinance for buffers and setbacks. There are a number of wetlands scattered throughout the site, and the applicant does need to comply with wetland and buffer setback requirements for those as well. I noted that in more detail in the staff report, there are some areas on the east side where it does not appear that they're being met, so we've included that discussion. An EAW, an environmental assessment worksheet, was completed earlier this year. An EAW is an opportunity to identify significant... The potential for significant environmental impacts and adopt mitigation strategies to address any potential environmental impacts. It's not a means to approve or deny a project, but a means to provide more information to the city as we review applications. This site is guided industrial. As part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan update, the city did re-guide it from medium density to light industrial. For the two years between 2017 and 2019, the city held 20 public meetings or open houses, offered a number of public surveys and online comment opportunities before adoption. But as a result of that plan, this was re-guided to light industrial in 2019. The zoning and land use maps are now on this screen. Hard to see, but where the red stars are are where the property is. Expands, again, that same industrial park that's in place. This was something the council adopted as a desire to provide more business opportunities in the city. Next slide. So the request this evening... The first request, I should say, is to rezone the property from light industrial to planned unit development. Planned unit development is a zoning district in Corcoran, and the zoning district through PUD creates a specific set of standards for the project. When we reviewed the project, we reviewed it for deviations from the I-1 district standards and throughout the report provided information about where flexibility is requested and where any benefits as identified by the applicant or by staff were. So I'm not going through each of the items, but in the staff report, we talk about the intent of the PUD, which is to, in general, is to provide opportunities for flexible development. And in exchange for the city providing some flexibility, we should get something better than we would otherwise get. That isn't exactly what the code says, but that's the summary of the code. So when we review the next slide, the site plan, there are five buildings proposed. On the south is Larkin Road. On the north side is County Road 50. Through the center of the site, there's a new public street that will extend north. There's a temporary cul-de-sac until the property to the north develops, and then that street would be extended ultimately up to County Road 50. The five buildings are industrial buildings surrounded by parking. There are loading docks, which sort of shows up black on this screen for each of the buildings. So the PUD development plan, the five buildings total almost 700,000 square feet of industrial. The parking on the plan, about 1,200 stalls, supports generally supports a mix of 20% office, 80% warehouse. It's a little different for each building, but just in general, as a frame of reference, that's the mix. Parking would need to be evaluated for each building as tenants change over time. So as a new tenant came in and wanted to get a building permit, we'd have to evaluate parking and make sure there's adequate parking on site. In the packet was an exhibit from the applicant's architect that showed that it is possible for some of those loading docks in the rear of the building to be converted to parking stalls if a tenant did not require the loading docks themselves. So just for information. But the plan as proposed has loading docks in... on one side of the building and parking on the other three sides. When reviewed against the I-1 standards, PUD flexibility is required for parking setbacks along Larkin for both buildings, along the new public street for three of... For four of the buildings, and then for parking on building... On the north side of Building C. Loading docks are 160 feet and 140 feet from the residential property line, respectively. South building is 60 feet. North building's 140 feet. This image was not in your packet. This image has actually been modified slightly to provide in the hashed area. Natalie, if you could highlight that hashed area where the landscaping is proposed to be added, like right there.
How do I do that?
I think you have a pointer. This is the... That's a change from what was in the packet, so I wanted to highlight that. So the code says that loading docks, when they are adjacent to residential, must be 300 feet away from residential property unless they're separated by an intervening building. So if a building... If that building was oriented 90 degrees, for example, the loading docks could be within 300 feet because they're not... Because they'd be separated by a building. The applicant's asking for PUD flexibility for that, and they have provided a 36-foot high wing wall on the side of the building, and you can sort of see that black line on the west side of each building. There is a retaining wall adjacent to Building A, which is the south building.
What's a wing wall?
I'm sorry.
Is that just like the end of the building?
Yeah. It just looks like the building wall is extended.
Oh, I see.
So it extends out to the end of the loading docks. So it's the same height of the building and will provide some screening of those docks... Or dock bays and trucks. So you can see that black line extends to the end of where the trucks would be parked.
Right here?
Yeah, right there. And so that's commonly used to provide screening, but it's not a building. So it still requires... Well, it may provide screening. It does not meet the code standard, so that's why flexibility is requested. The applicant notes that there is a 50-foot gas line easement that runs through the site, 50 foot wide, and that's that gray landscaped area between the two buildings. I can't...
She is. It is up there, guys. Oh, there we go. Thank you.
I cannot run the screen, though, so that's why I've asked Natalie a couple times to do it.
They don't work.
They can't see it online.
Oh, I meant up there. Oh, yes.
So we have to do it this way.
I'm working on it.
But that's the wing wall where the pointer is right now on that building, and there's a similar one on the other building. There is landscaping provided. This exhibit adds nine additional trees on leased unrammed property to the west to provide... To attempt to provide some more screening. So there were those cross-sections on the bottom. I understand if you're in the audience and didn't look at the packet, you cannot see those, but they were in the council or in the planning commission's packet as well, provided by the applicant to give you some sense of the separation.
Where's that 50-foot gas line?
Something right here?
Yes. Yep.
And folks, respectfully, I'm just going to ask that you hold your questions. No, 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 that's okay. You know, but you'll have an opportunity to ask, but I would like staff to just get through the report and then, you know, and then you'll have an opportunity, okay? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of hard for us to understand what she's saying if she doesn't point or draw what she's talking about.
I'm trying to keep up with her. I apologize. Usually she runs the presentation, but we're having technical difficulties, so I'm trying to keep up with what she's saying, and I will try to be better at it.
Thank you.
Retaining wall.
Yeah, I think we've gone through it. I kind of lost track, but I think we've gone through it. Buildings... The buildings themselves do comply with ordinance requirements, and you can see in these renderings... This is a view as if you're on Larkin, looking towards the buildings. And so they are precast panels with off, white, and gray, and then they've got some blue metal canopies. And you can see it alternates between the dark... Or the gray and the white. And there's a... The gray part is recessed into the building, so it provides both a number... A couple of different kinds of articulation to provide some interest around the front. There are windows at floor level, which also provides interest. So again, complies with the ordinance. They... On the side elevations, they've got some clear-story windows, which are windows up high. You can kind of see on that image. I think the planning commission should discuss... Again, it's a PUD. This does comply, but those... Some of the side elevations actually face our new public street. So does this actually, in a PUD, is that enough to break up those building elevations? So I think that's something you should consider. Again, it does comply with the letter of the law, but it is a PUD. Does it comply with the spirit of the code? Next slide. Infrastructure is obviously a big deal. The EAW that was done earlier this year included a feasibility study that was very, very detailed. If anyone's interested, it's available at City Hall. Natalie can provide a copy of that. But it outlined all of the required improvements. So a new public street will be constructed, as I mentioned, that will eventually connect up to County Road 50 through the center of the site. As part of this project, they will provide a temporary cul-de-sac. And there is an emergency vehicle access that will come out on the very north right there where Natalie's pointing. That is emergency only. Tenants, vendors cannot use that. It will be gated so that it's only available for a public safety access. Hennepin County, as part of the EAW, said they would not permit a full access in that location. So the secondary location is emergency only. Additionally, and it's visible on this rendering a little bit, which is why I added it. They are adding turn lanes at Larkin. So you can see the road gets a little wider there. But they will be providing turn lanes there as well as at Larkin and 116. And I know that's something that folks have a lot of concerns about, but those improvements will be part of this project. Sewer and water will be extended to the site as well. Excuse me. And will be... Water main will be looped for fire safety. That will make the connection be... Help make that connection between Rush Creek Reserve north of 50 and Tavera, ultimately, on the south side, down by Hackamar. I mentioned there is a significant ungrading on the site for these buildings. They need flat areas, and so there are some retaining walls as high as 10 feet. The largest retaining wall is down in that southwest corner that is 10 feet high. But there are a number of other retaining walls throughout the site. The retaining wall down in that southeast corner... Excuse me, southwest corner does mean that this building will be 10 feet lower than the residential driveway to the west. So sometimes it's hard to understand how a grading wall looks on a plan, so I just wanted to be clear. This would be 10 feet lower than the residential property. I mentioned the 50-foot gas line easement. It runs through the center of the site, but then it takes a turn north on the other side... On the west side, Natalie. Nope. A little further, right there. Goes north up that way. And so that does create some challenges on this site for buildings of this size between Larkin and the gas line and for plantings on the west side of that building D. However, we still need to evaluate this based on the code. So I want to make sure everybody understands where that gas line easement is and why some things are where they are. Next slide. The landscape plan here shows 697 overstory... Or 492 overstory trees and 1,700 shrubs, which is... Does not meet the code. They did not ask for PUD flexibility from the code. I think they can meet the planting requirements for shrubs. I think there are some areas along the new tree... New street where the parking areas are not screened as required by the code. But I do think with the number of buildings on the site, the locations of the wetlands, it will be a challenge to meet the trees. However, again, they did not ask for flexibility, so right now, the code... Or the resolution as drafted would say they have to comply. I did want to note that there is something in the code that says if you can't fit the trees on the property, the city could allow those trees to be planted at a public location, and the developer would pay cash for us to plant those trees. Again, this is a little bit weird. They didn't ask for PUD flexibility, so I don't have that in one of my PUD flexibility requests. And we are just saying you need to comply with the code. So, next slide. Parks and trails. The parks and trails did review this at their September meeting. The applicant does have the trail running along the east property line along the creek, which is great, except that we need to connect to the rest of the trail, which is going to come out at Bluebonnet. So the little orange squiggle on the right is where the trail is proposed today, and Parks Commission suggested it move up Bluebonnet there where Natalie's pointer is, and then east... And then connect north as originally planned. This is part of the Three Rivers Park Diamond Lake Regional Trail, and Three Rivers did comment on this. Their comments are in the packet. They were generally supportive of that concept. Ideally, they would have preferred it to stay along the creek the whole way and then have the trail along Larkin, but with this plan, that's just not possible. So they were supportive of this change. Because it's a Three Rivers Park Trail, it's still a 20-foot standard trail easement that the city requires, but instead of an 8-foot patuminous trail, it's a 10-foot patuminous trail. And there are some design standards that they look for that are a little different from ours in terms of radiuses and things, but they'll need to comply with those requirements. I mentioned there's a couple portions of the trail where we... It does not appear to meet the shoreline and wetland requirements, so that may need to wiggle a little bit through there, near that pond, and a little bit on the north side. Park dedication is due for this site. Park dedication for commercial areas is... In this case, will be for the trail net area, and then the remainder will be cash in lieu of land in accordance with the fee schedule in place at the time that the final plat is approved. Next slide. Oh, okay. Preliminary plat is for five lots, one for each of the buildings, and two outlots. And Natalie, if you can kind of point, Outlot A on the northwest corner is proposed to be retained for an amenity of some sort that would be used by the tenants, employees in these buildings. We don't have any details about that. The applicant here maybe could provide some information, but that's one of the things they suggest as a PUD benefit, but we don't really know what it is yet. Outlot B would be deeded to the city for a potential well site. We asked for that. Engineering is comfortable with that location and size. So that would be retained for future use as needed. Next slide. These were some images that were not in the packet that I received from the applicant yesterday, and I think they are helpful for a sense of scale. These are the five buildings. To the right side of the screen are some of the buildings in the industrial park. To the left side of the screen, you can see the residential homes over there. And just gives you the... You can see the retaining... Excuse me. The loading docks for the southern four buildings face each other, and the fronts of the buildings are on Larkin. The retaining... Or the loading areas for the northern building faces the creek, the industrial park to the east. Next slide. And so these are just some renderings. I got them yesterday. I have not, to be honest, calculated to make sure it matches the landscape plan, but these are renderings provided by the applicant. Next slide. This is at Larkin and Bluebonnet. This is a higher view at Larkin and Bluebonnet. This is actually from... I don't... I don't think it's from Tom Feehan's property. I think it's actually the property to the south. This is from the residential property to the west. Next slide. And then this is a view from Feehan property, the northern of the two residential properties to the west, and it reflects that additional landscaping and that new landscape plan. Next slide. So the PUD that was requested... PUD flexibility was... That was requested by the applicant is for the parking setbacks, is for the parking setbacks, the loading docks within 300 feet of the residential without an intervening building. And they have indicated that the PUD benefits are the construction of a new industrial park and the tax base and jobs that that brings, the offsite improvements on Larkin and County Road 116, and a deeded site for the city well. Again, I did not include that landscaping issue as PUD flexibility, just made that a condition. So in order to help the discussion, the city must determine whether the PUD standards and the intent of the PUD have been met. So to help the discussion, I did draft resolutions for approval, just to give a framework for what kind of conditions would, at a minimum, need to be attached. If you were inclined to find that the standards have been met and recommend approval, as always, you can modify those. I've noted a couple specific items that you might want to talk about. However, if the commission finds that the PUD standards have not been met, you should recommend denial, and you could provide findings of fact. The rezoning and the PUD are one of the items where you have a lot of discretion on. Next slide. This is a public hearing.
Can I interrupt you? Can you go back a slide, please? So you've drafted resolutions if we approve. Have you drafted resolutions for if we deny?
I have not, but in the staff report, I did include some findings in the PUD that you could find the PUD standards were not met, and you could use that as a framework for the denial.
Okay, all right. I like having choices. Thank you.
So this, I should back up on that if I could for a second. If you do recommend denial, you can do that by motion with the findings. Next slide. So this is a public hearing, and there were comments submitted by Tom Feehan that were included in your packet. Those are entered into the record as if he read them or handed them out this evening. And the applicant is here as well with his team for questions.
Okay. Thank you. Before we open the, the public hearing to allow your comments, sir, I owe you an opportunity to make sure that you were able to see, and, you know, I promised you that you could ask questions.
She was on the slide. If I ask now, you have to go back.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure, because I did promise you, and I promised you an opportunity too, so I just want to make sure that I'm doing that. Sir, I'm sorry, what?
That aspect of it.
Okay, ma'am. Did you have any, you, did you have any questions? I know that I promised you an opportunity, okay? Okay, thank you. I appreciate your understanding.
Mr. Chair, I will just be happy to add, anyone that participates in the public hearing, feel free to ask me to go back to a slide. I can pull it up no problem, so that, that is not an inconvenience at all.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll open the, the in-person comments. Would any of you like to address us or voice questions or, sir, if you, if you could, please?
You'll go next, sir.
You'll go next.
Yeah, George May.
Is that on?
This thing on?
Yeah. And if you could state your, your name and, and your address, please.
220 Larkin Road.
Thank you.
You haven't addressed any of the traffic concerns. That, that property is outsized for, when they said to change the deal for, for the residential or whatever it was to the light industrial, I'm thinking it was like downtown Corcoran where you've got A1 outdoor power and you've got Phil's Automotive, and now you've got this behemoth of just huge building, and there's going to be, how many trucks are going to come to fill up a building that size? Not to mention, how many parking spots was there? There's like seven?
1,249.
Yeah, okay, so.
I counted.
Seventy-five percent of that, or 50% of that, there, during the day, I mean, and all you have is Larkin Road. You don't have County Road 50, the, the county said, no, you can't, that's emergency only, there's a gate. So everything coming down Larkin. And Larkin isn't a huge road, it's two, two, two-lane road and a couple miles up is dirt. But that's just, this is kind of a project that should be in Rogers. Like, you see it all day long, you're driving on 94, and you look over, and hey, there's these huge buildings, and they're accessed within a couple miles to a highway. We don't have that. We've got, you've got County Road 116 up there, that's two-lane road, and you go down and 55, okay, it's a little bigger highway, but it just, it doesn't fit the scope of this area. I don't, I don't see what the benefits are, other, well, money in the pockets of the city, I suppose, but as for the people living there, no. There isn't really any, any benefit to be had, as far as I'm concerned. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Tom Feehan, 20410 Larkin Road. My wife and I live just on the west side of this development. I was just curious, so you weren't planning on showing any of the?
No, I'm not able to easily pull that up. Is there an image that we have that you'd like me to pull up? Maybe the overhead view of the buildings? Would that be helpful? Here, one second.
Well. So those were added since the packet was sent out, so what I'm going to be responding to is your original packet, but I do find that amusing, and I'll tell you why. So I'm here to summarize a few key points from that written response that was sent I am praying that you all took a look at it, but I'm kind of thinking that you had very little time, maybe didn't see it. If there's one takeaway I would like everybody here tonight to leave with, it's this. I believe that we are being asked to approve five giant concrete box buildings and allow the developer to sidestep several city codes, and I think that's all to benefit the developer. I don't believe this is a case of hardship, and what the developer is proposing to do for the city in exchange for sidestepping these codes, as far as I can tell, is literally nothing at all what a non-PUD proposal would require. I think the Shuddy Farm is a large, beautiful piece of property. I think it should be able to accommodate many types of beautiful proposals without needing to allow a developer to sidestep a city code. For everyone here, everyone watching online, I think anybody who will be watching online, since they're not seeing this, I would hope that you would go to the Corcoran website, you would download this packet. If you do that, you can scroll down and you can see some of the images I provided. I think it would be helpful. So rezoning, preliminary plat, and PUD. That seems like an awful lot to be bundled all into one. I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's going to add for mistakes and bad ideas. All of the history of regiding this to industrial, I never heard about it. I had no idea what was going on. I usually check this website regularly. I don't know how many residents would have found out about it. I don't know if anybody here would love that happening, but I don't feel like we have a real chance of finding out. Anyway, I think bundling all those things adds to confusion. So, for example, with the rezoning, I just want to be clear, I am not necessarily opposed to seeing this rezoned to light industrial.
We think there's.
That microphone, that makes it worse. No, you're fine, it's a natural instinct, but it's not good.
Thank you. But as our friend over there said, I don't think there's anything light about this, no, as far as industrial. I think these are five gigantic concrete box buildings, and I don't think they belong on that site. As far as rezoning, I do think, I would be very curious to know, a lot of people, I think, put a lot of work into determining that that site should have been residential. I don't know how much work went into deciding it should change to light industrial, but again, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I am opposed to five gigantic buildings being put on that site. I don't, I just don't see that they belong there. And I, I hate to say this, but this seems really far along to me. It, it seems like, you know, these guys have put a lot of work into this. From what I can tell, this has been going on, not since February, but maybe going on two years, and we just received a public notice a few days ago, so a few weeks, a couple weeks ago, but by the time I received it, I literally had like two days to try to submit a written response. And that, again, that doesn't really seem like fair for the public. Regarding the preliminary plat, I do have a horse in the race, and I see that some of my concerns have been addressed. My wife and I, where we live, we would have been looking down the backside of four out of five of those warehouses. But moreover, that new city street, as far as I can tell, goes right up through there, and you drive by on that city street, you're going to see the backsides of four of those warehouses. I don't see, I don't see enough screening to keep you from seeing that. And if I read the code directly, that does not meet code for loading in service areas for shielding them.
Mr. Feehan, respectfully, we're at five minutes, so please finish your, your comments. I want to hear what you have to say, but we have a lot on the agenda tonight, and I want to be respectful of everyone's time.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I, I will try to wrap up quickly. I was pretty sure that what Natalie meant when she said five minutes was I would at least get five minutes for zoning, plating, and PUD. Just kidding. I will try to speed up.
Well played, sir, well played.
It is a lot. I mean, it is an awful lot, and it's confusing. So, how can I skip forward? Let's put it this way. I just want to mention that the illustrations, the renderings that, that was provided, I call that a developer sleight of hand. Those pictures are wedge-shaped pictures. I don't believe they illustrate well just how big these buildings are going to be on Larkin Road. I think if you live on Larkin Road, there isn't much about that that's going to be very attractive or comply with all of the things that technically you guys are all supposed to be required to do as a part of a PUD. I read a number of city codes regarding PUDs. They talk about superior designs, they talk about maintaining open spaces. I, I hope that all of you, before you move forward with any of this, go out to this property, stand on Larkin Road at the southeast corner and stare down to Bluebonnet, and try to imagine a building that is two and a half football fields long, almost 40 feet high, and it's straight up concrete. And as far as I know, there is nothing in this light industrial requirement that says that that can't be, those buildings couldn't be 10% office space on one corner and in warehouse all the rest of the way down.
No. Mr. Feehan, we, we do appreciate your comments tonight, and if I could just add, I found your submittal to be very helpful, so thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
I think that is incredibly unfair.
What is incredibly unfair?
To stop somebody and limit them to five minutes over something this important.
I'm sorry that you feel that way. Do we have anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Gail. Well, I'll let you know when we can take your comments. One second.
All right, thank you.
So my name is Dan Dixon. I live at 20129 Larkin Road. Is it possible to go back to the, the view of the structure from Larkin Road?
This one?
Uh, no, not that one. Keep going. It must be further to the front of the slides. There, is that it?
Yep.
Yeah, there you go. So, well, actually, no, go back one more. There was a better one. Come on. Or was it?
Those are all.
I don't think there was a better one.
Well, I'll keep it simple. So you saw that picture there. This, this is basically, oh, okay, this is the public street I'm guessing, right here?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is not exactly the best view, but this is basically what it would look like out my front door. So I live, if you want to go back to the big plot version.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, keep going. It's probably easier with the graphics. Right here.
All right, there you go.
Right. I live right here. So right now, I look outside and I see cornfields and soybean fields. If this is approved with that great tree work right there, I'm going to be looking at the front of a 36-foot building when I go out my front door. That's what I get to grow, that's what I get, my kids get to look at, that's what I get to do. Every day, I get to go outside and see that and all the traffic this is bringing in. It was supposed to be light industrial, which, I'm not a big fan of the light industrial. I mean, this city is growing so fast with all the homes being built, that eventually it's going to need a school. I was kind of thinking that that was what the city was thinking, was putting a school here with all these homes they're trying to build, but now all of a sudden, it's a big giant warehouse. I have no buffer from this building, so I'm one of the only people around that has a house where the buffer between my house and a giant warehouse is a street. There's not even a real tree buffer there, there's not even landscape buffer, there's no buffer of any kind. I am looking at a gigantic building. So that was something that really concerned me, because now, this is really heavy industrial what we're looking at here. This is not light industrial, these are giant warehouses. So a light, a heavy industrial and residential, they don't go together very well, and I'm not real happy about what's going on. So the buffers, I don't see any buffers of any kind for Larkin, for anybody that lives on Larkin. The other problem I had is because it is light industrial, my thought was that the city was going to change this to light industrial, expand upon what currently is there, extending 75th Street into it, so that it basically keeps Larkin out of the play, and 75th Street, which is right here, can continue on into this light, I'm sorry, continue on into this light industrial area, and then they can build a nice buffer with the trail system to keep Larkin Road separated from all these businesses. Now all of a sudden, the trails have decided that it's okay to deviate from their current plan and allow this to be built and let people ride their bikes and walk their dogs through warehouses. I don't understand that. That makes no sense to me. So I'm not a big fan of this idea. I think this is horrible for the area. I understand that the city wants to develop, they want to grow, and eventually they're going to make me move, but for right now, I would like to have residential stay residential, light industrial to be light industrial, but do the buffers that are necessary to keep the two separated. They're not supposed to be together, and this is not even close to light industrial. I know those people want to speak, so I'll leave them on, I'll leave it at that. I'm not a big fan.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have someone online?
Yeah, so generally, we take online comments after everyone in the public has had a chance to speak. Was there, do we want to take Gail's comments now, or we could see if anyone else wants to?
No, we'll, we'll follow the rules. Do we have anyone else here? Yes, sir. Thank you. Please just state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
My name's Ryan Richter. We live at 7225 Buckskin Trail, which is on the southeast portion of this, where two houses down, the gentleman just spoke, and we're right here on the corner. Sorry, I know you got the corner there. I have very much the same concerns as him, as well as my neighbor in between us, which will be Gail. I moved from Denver, from the city of Denver, a year ago, and we moved with the intent of trying to get away from this. Not that that's any, any of your business concern, but I'm on board with light industrial as well, but I work in these type of buildings, and I work around these type of buildings, and with them being, you know, between 30 and 40 feet high, and the image that and with them being, you know, between thirty and forty feet high and the image that Tom painted, going two football fields down the road there, I'm sorry for my choppiness in my voice, too, I'm just not very happy. The sound, there's no buffer to echo what he was saying, there's no buffer between, we have the road and I have three kids underneath ten. I mean, you're talking about increasing traffic, the noise level is going to just echo right along Larkin, there's nowhere for it to go except up, and you're talking about heavy industrial trucks coming through here for warehouse buildings, you're talking about everybody that works in these warehouse buildings only using one source in and one source out of Larkin Road, which it's not built for that. It's frustrating to see like Tom said as well, with not much time to prepare and also not much time to talk, because I think there are a lot of issues with this, with not meeting code, but also with the, the possibility of having a lot of us along here upset at this issue, which has been huge concrete buildings. We look out and we see cornfields, I feel like I'm echoing, but we see cornfield, we see, you know, open field, I can barely see Tom's house, and I stood, I went out yesterday on the corner that he's talking about. To imagine a building going from there all the way to the other, the other end where Bluebonnet is, is just, it's hard to think about as is, but when you think about it almost being as tall as the light poles, that's, that's absurd to me. We go to Fabelas up in Rogers a lot and it does form up there. It's something like that. I'm, I'm all for growth and it's not that I don't want anything to be here, I know that it needs to develop and I knew that coming in to Corcoran, but this is not what I had in mind. And, yeah, I'm just very worried about the sound buffer if this follows through. I mean, there's nothing there and then my kids are at risk ultimately, too, so I'm worried about that as well. And then the road, I mean, that's a lot of wear and tear on the road, you're talking that many people going in and out every day. I will tell you that the infrastructure in the road that's there right now cannot handle that for more than maybe a few years, so. That's, that's all I have to say, I'm sorry for echoing other comments, but I'm right on board with them, so.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you for taking the time to come out and speak with us.
Yeah, thank you, Mitch.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your address, please. Thank you for holding the mic for us, by the way. You're doing a great job.
My name is Linda Benson, I'm here with my husband and wife, and we live at two-oh-two-five Larkin Road, which is right next to Dan. And I can't imagine this being here, it's just, I can't imagine that you want to do this to Corcoran, to put this in the heart of Corcoran, it doesn't belong here. And I'm sorry that I'm so emotional, but it just doesn't belong here. It's, I have the same feelings as they do, but I just wish you would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else, do we have anyone else that would like to, yes, sir? Oh, sorry, you'll be next, sir.
Hello, my name is Lee Sunram. I have a business at two-zero-zero-one-zero Seventy-Fifth Avenue North, and then I also live at two-zero-three-zero-five Cunningham Road Fifty. And I own forty-some acres to the west of this, which I purchased from the Feehan family a good number of years ago, and, you know, with the idea of having some kind of development there. And, you know, I'm, I'm not against development, gosh, I, when I bought here, that was really my initiative, is, is to have it developed, you know, someday. And one thing I'd like to make clear is, like, well, on Seventy-Fifth Avenue North, you know, there's a number of contractors and trucks coming in and out of there, seven, eight o'clock at night, and it's really tough to get on one-sixteen, you know, the way it is. And, you know, where all this traffic is going to be channeled, it's, it's going to change the face of Corcoran's road system, you know, it's, what, what Larkin is now will not be the Larkin after this development is through, so what, whatever goes here is probably going to be on part of my property, too, to the west. And I just want for you, the staff, to take a good look at this. Don't sell us something that we can't sell, too. If, it means a great deal to us also, that's all I have.
Thank you for your comments, sir, and for taking the time to come out and share them with us. Sir, please state your name and your address, please.
Phil Bongartz. I'm at nineteen-nine forty-nine Larkin Road, so I'm up closer to the mini storage. First of all, I'd like to know when the hearing came out about when the ordinance was changed from residential to light industrial? I don't remember seeing anything like that. I should have been notified. All of us should have been notified. I don't see the benefits of this. Is Larkin going to be the main road? Is there not going to be Seventy-Fifth connected through? When you tried pushing ten and fifty through Larkin Road, five years ago? That was, we were already under the understanding that Larkin Road couldn't handle traffic like that. How is it going to handle truck traffic now? You recoded it, it split already. There's seams everywhere, there's patches everywhere. You're going to run water and sewer to this? Where's that going to, where's it going to go through? I'm assuming you're going to run it down Larkin? Going to re-rip it up again? What's going to happen with runoff? I put up a thirty-by-forty shed in two thousand and eleven. I had to notify all my neighbors, saying, okay, now there's this patch of ground where water cannot soak in anymore, it's going to run off, it's going to run into the neighbor's yard because my, our yards are sloped. Where is this, nothing's soaking in anywhere here. And you got acres and acre, you know, yards, whatever, it's at least a couple acres of complete hard surface. Where is it going to run to? Has that been addressed? You're going to overflow that creek. I had to go through all kinds of steps with through the ordinance just to build my building, you had to match my house. My house has vinyl siding on it, I had to vinyl side my shed. Looks like they can do whatever they want here. Where's the regulations? I do not approve it either. I'd like to know how it got this far without anybody knowing. We should have been notified.
Thank you for your comments tonight, sir. Would anyone else like to address the commission?
I can just make one last comment.
Yes, sir.
About ten seconds.
Sure, please.
Yeah, it's so everyone online can hear you.
Okay, okay. I don't know if anybody remembers, it's got to be about six, seven years ago now, we had the massive rain in October, we had about ten inches of rain in one night. That creek flooded completely, flooding most of the homes in the area, and the street was impassable for about a day or two. That was just from a rainfall. If this goes in, that creek, it goes to a, basically a wetland. There's no way it can handle that kind of water drain off. If there's no way to move that water some other way, you're flooding this area anytime to get a heavy rain.
Thank you. Would anyone else, do we have any more comments? No? Okay, you know, I, I do just want to thank everyone for coming out, we understand how important this is to all of you, so thank you.
Members of the public online, Gail will speak first, since she's been patiently waiting, but if there's anyone else who would like to address the commission, please raise your hand now and we'll get you in queue. If you're on your phone, that'd be by star nine, and if you're on your computer or other mobile device, you will be able to use the raise your hand function via the reactions menu. And, Gail, go ahead and please state your full name and address.
Yes, hi. My name is Gail Waldorf. I live at two-zero-one-one-seven Larkin Road. I apologize for not being there in person tonight, I had a commitment to attend, but I'm glad that the discussion is still happening now. I live between Ryan and Dan on Larkin Road, and their view would be mine, a complete cement wall. And what is really disheartening about this whole thing is that a number of us have said that we work in buildings like this, we work in neighborhoods like this, and then we go home to our safe retreats, and if you're going to rezone this to industrial, you're bringing crime and everything else that comes with it into our neighborhood. We are a neighborhood, we are residential, we are the first landowners, not this builder, not this developer. We are a neighborhood, we want to keep it that way, and we want to keep it safe. Please do not rezone this to be industrial. This is extreme industrial. What I picture is that this four-foot-long building become an Amazon rented building? Can you imagine that going through Larkin Road? There are, oh my gosh, I don't know how many people a day I see walking, jogging, kids biking, horse riders riding their horses down Larkin Road. And so, this is even a topic to come forward to have this be zoned industrial when you have families living here doing those things in a safe place right now, because it won't be if this goes through. One thing that I'm really concerned about is that you have Seventy-Fifth Street, I know that Dan brought that up, why are we not utilizing that? That's industrial area already. Use what we have versus ruining somebody else's home. One other concern that I have are lights. What type of lights are these big-ass buildings going, excuse me, big buildings going to bring to our neighborhood? Can you just imagine this fluorescent thing? I remember, I don't know, six, seven years ago, that the gas station was not even allowed to have some type of fluorescent light or sign. What are these buildings going to be? Huge and very bright. These buildings are not even seen in Minneapolis of all places, and here we're going to have a little ton of Corcoran become this industrial place? No, we don't want this. I can see this land becoming residential or light industrial, like some of us have said. That makes sense, right? Utilize Seventy-Fifth, leave Larkin alone. An elementary school is perfect for all of the homes that you guys are allowing to build, and yet, when you look at Corcoran, there's so many other less desirable pieces of land that these warehouses can go on. For example, the triangular land just east of Larkin, near the big power plant that's going up. What are you going to do with that? And if you think about it, how many homes are you affecting there? One, versus all of us here on Larkin Road. And then, what about the land just north of City Hall? My late husband used to call it the Corcoran Flats because it would always flood. Why not put the warehouses there if you want an industrial place? It's less desirable land for less desirable buildings just like these. Please do not consider to rezone this land to be industrial. It is not the place, it is not the time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Gail, and I appreciate you waiting with us tonight.
Mr. Chair, no one else is raising their hands. Members of the public, one last call for, hold them in line.
Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nope. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll open up commission discussion. And I'll lead off myself.
One moment, Chair, may I ask one question?
Sure.
Because it was brought up more than a few times, could staff potentially just address the reason we're not using Seventy-Fifth? Is that possible? And then we can begin our discussion.
Yeah, yeah, please, thank you.
Yeah, Seventy-Fifth actually does not extend to this property, there's a vacant lot between Seventy-Fifth and this property, so the property that is owned by another party is not for sale and is available, a lot of record in our existing industrial park.
Thank you.
So, we're entering our discussion out. Can we turn off this microphone? It's giving me tinnitus.
Thank you, Gideon.
And thank you to our very own tech support tonight. Thank you. You'll be paid a, a union wage. So, I'm going to take this myself to start. So, I, just a little housekeeping, one thing that I think is kind of weird about this report is that the, the page numbers are incorrect on every single page. They say one of two, two of three, three of four, four of five, and I just want to point this out just in case if there's some issue with the underlying template. I have three topics that I'd like to discuss with respect to this item. First, PUDs are generally used in areas guided mixed use or mixed residential use unless the city finds that it is applicable in other districts. Please see City Code ten forty point one four zero subdivision three. As a threshold issue, since when has the city found that PUDs are appropriate in areas guided light industrial? As we know, most PUD applications are residential. I see that the staff report indicates that City Council has reviewed the sketch, but I don't believe that it specifically found that PUDs are appropriate in areas guided light residential. Second, and this was pointed out by Mr. Feehan and by staff, the loading areas are not in compliance with our code. They encroach significantly within the three-hundred-foot requirement. Section ten sixty point zero six zero states, and this was the section cited by staff, that quote, "Loading areas established after March twenty-third, two thousand and four shall be prohibited within three hundred feet of residentially zoned or guided property unless completely screened by an intervening building. Loading areas not requiring screening by an intervening building shall be screened from adjacent residentially zoned or guided property by the use of berms, fences, or walls to provide one-hundred percent opacity to a height of at least ten feet. The height of the screening shall be measured from the grade of the loading areas," end quote. My read of this code section is that it indicates that no level of screening is going to be sufficient unless it is an intervening building, not a tree, not a shrub, not a bush, not landscaping. But this section appears to apply to gravel surfaces. Staff report cites this code section. Staff report cites this code section, and it seems like the applicant is requesting flexibility from this requirement, so it seems to believe, it seems that it is subject to that requirement. In context, it seems to relate to gravel parking lots. This is important because it's the difference between screening using another building or screening using landscaping, like a bush. If that section cited by staff applies only to loading areas with gravel, then I think that Mr. Feehan is correct. And section 1060.070 sub 2J3 applies, which states that quote, "Loading and service areas shall be screened from properties guided or zoned residential and from public streets." As it sits now, there is no screening. In fact, the applicant doesn't meet other landscaping standards and has not asked for flexibility from those requirements either. So, at the end of the day, this application seems to have a couple of silent, not explicit requests. And third, I have concerns that the flexibility being requested is not defined in some areas. For example, one of the three flexibilities requested is quote, "Unknown" for the side/rear parking setback. I do not think that we should write a blank flexibility check where we do not know with precision what the applicant is asking for. In addition to that, the benefits the city is receiving, assuming the PUD standard applies, are, one, new industrial development in the city; two, make off-site street improvements at Larkin Road and County Road 116; three, deed a site for a future city well and, you know, cash. These are benefits, but the benefits aren't really a bargain. It's basically, Corcoran, let us do this, and what we are doing is so good that that should be enough of a benefit for you. Why can't they just do it and comply with the code? So, to recap, I think we have a few issues. One, whether a PUD is even appropriate here in a location-guided light industrial. Two, we have the screening issue, which in my view is the biggest flexibility requested. And three, and more generally, we are providing flexibility in exchange for quote, "benefits." The biggest of which is one-sided and is essentially quote, "What we are doing is a benefit enough, and Corcoran, you should just be happy that we're building in your city." For the reasons I have explained, I am going to vote to recommend denial of the application, but I would like to hear from my other colleagues. Thank you.
If I may, I have a few clarifying questions for staff that should guide my comments. But one of the clarifying questions is it was brought up that the rezoning is from this medium-density to light industrial. And I just want to clarify that it's not rezoning, it's already been rezoned as light industrial. It's whether it should be rezoned for a PUD. Is that correct? Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that because that was something that kept coming up in public comments. So, this has already been determined on the map to be light industrial. The request for rezoning tonight is to change it from light residential to a PUD, which offers flexibility.
Light industrial.
Light industrial, sorry. I don't even know what I just said. Second day with no coffee. Okay, so that was my first clarifying thing. And then, secondly, when we talked about the grading, Kendra, you had mentioned that it was going to be 10 feet lower or sunken, the back building. But I wanted to clarify that that still means that the overall height of this building will be 30 feet from what the residents can see, not that it's going to be, that they will only see the 10 feet, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm pretty sure.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't remember if it's 30 feet, I can't remember the building head of it.
So, I think in our packet, the information put it roughly at a height of 40 feet. So, if it's 10 feet sunken, what we're looking at overall, from the west side, not from the south side, is a 30-foot elevation rather than, but from Larkin Road, you would still be seeing the 40-foot elevation. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, I had a question, which was regarding the lot standards. So, in the light industrial, the standards show, or the lot standards given to us in the packet showed that the impervious surface, the maximum impervious surface would be at 70%. And I know that this was a big thing when we were reviewing the schools and churches, so that's why I wanted to touch on this. It's currently stated that it's unknown for this property what the maximum impervious surface is. And I guess I have two questions related to that. Is, one, do we kind of have an idea what that would be for the whole project? But then also, is that per plat, a maximum impervious surface, or is that per PUD?
So, the code limits 70% per lot.
Per lot.
The, a person could ask, as part of a PUD, to apply that across the plat. But the code is per lot, and they did not ask for flexibility for that.
And do we know per plat what this percentage of impervious surface is?
I don't have that calculation, so they would have to comply. The applicant is here and might be able to provide that, but I don't have that information on the plans.
Okay. And then, it was, that was my other question, is that the proposed side and rear flexibility is currently unknown. So, that's the flexibility that the applicant is asking for, but we don't have a number, it's listed in the packet and in bright red as unknown. And so, that is something that comes without conditions if there's an approval, like, or...
In the approval, number nine B, Commissioner, I wrote, what I think it is, is a five-foot setback where 10 feet's required. It's just, I scaled that on the line. I would rather it be dimensioned on the plan to confirm that.
Okay, okay. All right. So, I guess I will, I mean, I really appreciated all of the comments. I do want you all to know that we do take these types of things quite serious. I drive out to the site of each location, so I have done what you were all recommending, which was to drive along Larkin Road and stand there and envision. And so, I just want you to have the reassurance that people really are trying to dig into these. I also understand and appreciate that it is one of the city's goals to create a tax base, since 84% of the taxes from the city currently come from residents. But I feel like a lot of the deviations that are being requested could be met if the building sizes were just scaled down. I know that we have also heard council talk about, as well as the commission, we've talked about buffer zones, in particular to legacy, what we were calling kind of legacy neighborhoods. And I think that that's an important issue as we talk about bringing growth, is how do we protect those who have invested in, you know, residing here? And so, I think in particular, considering the neighbors to the south and the neighbors to the west, that there really should not be any deviation from the flexibility of the standards that have an impact on those transitions. So, all that to say, it would be something that I would actually require a grader. If we can't meet those, I mean, at a minimum, we should be meeting the standards that we have asked for, especially since the intent is to do something better than just meet the minimum. So, in that regard, being that one of the buildings is, or the loading decks is 60 feet from the residential home, that's 240 feet closer than our current standards. And does seem like it would be possible if the size of the building was just scaled down. I too have some traffic concerns, I guess, long-term. I'm curious what will happen for where 50 and 10 come, because even if this road, this future road comes up to, or when it comes up to County Road 50, just envisioning is, and I know we can't see into the future because no one's holding that magic eight ball tonight, but are we putting a stoplight at that weird intersection? So, it does seem even strange to be talking about directing, you know, splitting the traffic for this new area between these two roads and then trying to funnel them into those areas. And I do think that we want it to be a successful business park. We want this, there are types of buildings like this going up all over the place, and I'd like to see something unique that makes future businesses want to have their business here. If there are a number of places where they can get them, Rogers, that's Ego, Elk River, then what would be the thing that sets it apart to say pull to Corcoran? And goodness, if traffic is a difficult thing to pull your business to this business park, you know, I think if I was a prospective business thinking about where I would rent, that would certainly be one of the things that I would consider. I also, you know, just in terms of its appearance, dwarfing some of the other light industrial businesses that it's surrounding, I think it would look very out of place. So, I would agree at this point in time with my colleague that I don't think that the PUD standards have been met. There isn't enough of a benefit to offer and grant that kind of flexibility. If I were to talk about some other things that could be done for revisions in the future, I would definitely look at scaling things back so that the codes could be met, and I'd be interested in taking a second look. That's what I have, but I do reserve the right to make additional comments.
Thanks. Yeah, and you guys talked about a lot of stuff that I was already thinking about, too. I mean, I, in general, just for everybody else, I generally agree. These buildings, I see them, and I'm always like, just amazed at, like on 94, you look at the door going in for a human being, and they're just massive. Something like this is, again, you know, we're going to have now a nursing home essentially in the heart of Corcoran, and then a, I wouldn't even call this a business park. I don't know what this is, big warehouses, you know, this is what we're building our city around. Seems very, very odd to me. I don't, what I don't understand, and I get we could say, you know, no to the PUD and that they, you know, must comply with our existing code, but much of this could be, if they were pulled them back a little bit, most of this could still be done within code, right? I mean, the height of the buildings, there's, they could still be done. Is that a true statement?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, yes, it would be further off the properties on the west. I don't know anything about from the properties on the south, this is at this point. This is considered light industrial, it meets our standards from, from some of the stuff you were talking about, sir, about the architectural stuff. There are standards defined, this does meet it. And so, our code, our law as a city now, does allow much of this. Not the PUD, but it is unfortunate that this is a developer who, and I don't know who is here representing them, but from a city's perspective, like, this is what we're building our city around. It really is unfortunate. It would have been great to have seen more like a real business park where there's, you know, there's different kinds of smaller businesses running out of there versus large warehouses. But I think that, I mean, you guys already touched on the things, I thought the benefits seemed very silly. Maybe the well is the benefit, but the fact that we're building a building here and that's the benefit was a very odd one. Yeah, you guys really, yeah, you covered all the questions I had, so, you know, I just wanted to at least make my comments again, as a resident here, that I, and I don't live in this area, I live north here in Corcoran, but I just think this is very unfortunate.
Well, I will add that as far as the request for setbacks, like, I would definitely be willing to consider a setback from the Blue Bonnet Road, since that's like in an industrial neighborhood, right? But I think we really do need to protect the setback along Larkin Road because of the residents who live across the street. I do also feel like the trail is, if there was a way, it is kind of funny that it runs in between. And then, yeah, and so I just think about, like, it's not even running in between, like, potentially, it could be parking spaces, depending on the business that's there, but potentially, it would be a loading dock area with semi-trucks coming and going. And so, I also believe that a benefit to the city for, like, granting a PUD really would be if we could make that trail stick where it stays along the creek and comes along Larkin Road. I mean, I would see that that would be a potential benefit to the city as well. So, all that to say, those were some additional comments that I wanted to make in case council would like some suggestions on potentially what matters with regard to things that would be considered flexible on.
Yeah, if I could also ask, too, is there any kind of, I didn't, I don't know if I, maybe it was in here and I missed it, but, traffic study at all? Is that something we generally do for something like this?
Feasibility study.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Yes, a full feasibility study was done with the EAW, and I did not attach it. It's a significant document, but we certainly make that available to anybody who's interested here at City Hall. It did look at traffic, and that's where the requirements for the turn lanes on Larkin and, Larkin and Blue Bonnet and Larkin and 116 came from. It does talk about existing traffic levels of service and potential traffic levels of service with the trips coming out of this. So, certainly can make that available to anyone that's interested in seeing a copy of that.
Thank you.
And maybe, it is in a packet from the EAW. It's included in the EAW, which is in the May 11th packet, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No?
Well, I will just say, too, lighting is always a concern for me. So, I, especially with the LED lights that are, oh, I feel like they are just brighter. So, obviously, I would love it if Corcoran, any business that comes to Corcoran, could be a leader in what do we do to minimize the migration patterns of nocturnal birds that require, you know, that get disoriented by excessive lighting. But all that to say, there really isn't a lot of material.
It sounds like people get disoriented.
Well, there's not any options out there, but it, wouldn't it be grand if that's something we could be known for? So, that's my wish list.
Great, thank you. I'm going to make a motion to recommend denial of the draft ordinance approving this rezoning. Can I get a second?
I will second that.
And can we get a vote? All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Oh, would you like to take an opportunity to slightly revise the...
Well, there you took the vote.
Oh, there you took the vote, okay. So, you do have to make it for the rest, the other two, I may have wrote it wrong on your agenda, but go ahead and just deny, or just say the motion for the other two items.
I think the other two are moot, aren't they?
I thought they were, but go ahead and just do it for the record, I apologize.
Okay.
Better safe than...
Well, I will, I will make a motion to recommend denial of the draft resolution with findings of fact supporting the rezoning, it says, but...
And you could make a motion for the rest of it.
Well, how about this? I'll make a motion to deny the whole thing.
Yes, there you go.
Okay, I'm...
I'll second that.
All right, yeah, let's wrap that up.
You just recommend to city council, just so everybody's clear.
So, I have a second. Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. That carries.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
For the record, I am Jeff Binham, JMK, developer, and I didn't get a chance to really, I figured I was waiting for a chance to talk, like, maybe somebody would ask me to speak, like, just as to clarify.
Well, I think everyone here had an opportunity.
Yeah, and I guess I was thinking, well, let's let the presentation roll out so everybody could see it. And then, at some point towards the end, we'd still have a chance, after your comments, that maybe I'd have a chance, that you would offer me a chance to at least speak.
Well, you were given an opportunity to speak when I gave all of them an opportunity to speak, and you sat and you were quiet.
I'm just trying to explain my reasoning. I was waiting for some other things, so...
Sure.
Nonetheless, I just appreciate the opportunity to speak. One of the things I'd like to say, a couple of things I'd like to say is, number one, we carefully came through the, we went through all the gates of every meeting. We spent numerous meetings here at the city.
Okay, sir, I'm going to cut you off. Our discussion is over.
Well, I just think I should have a...
You had an opportunity, and you missed it.
I just made an application.
We have a lot, I understand that, but with all due respect, we have already, please, we have already had our discussion, we have already had our vote. You had an opportunity to speak and you were silent.
That's right.
So, now we have other business. Thank you. And with that, may I ask to take a 10-minute break? We've been at this 90 minutes.
Certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.